Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting the order of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for May 8th, 2018. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Braun.
Here.
Commissioner Arthur Rees.
Here.
Mayor Marion.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all, with the exception of Commissioner Warnock, who is away for work, are present.
Thank you. We bow your heads with me for a brief prayer.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a favor of you?
Absolutely.
For those that may not know it, former patrolman Adam Dominic's wife was tragically killed in a car accident this past weekend. So if you would include her in your prayers, please, sir?
No, absolutely. If we could just have a moment of silence for former patrolman Adam Dominic's wife. Thank you. All right. We do not have any executive sessions or public presentations tonight. We do have a couple of business meeting items, and I'm going to turn over to the town administrator those two items.
What you have in front of you, the item called Agreement of Sale, this is the final pieces to the town's efforts to get the old Baltimore-Philadelphia railroad, that land donated from Cecil County to the town of Rising Sun for future walking trails. So what you have before you is the agreement of sale that the town would enter into with the county, which would result in us buying that land for $1. The land that is covered is essentially from the Pennsylvania, oh, I'm sorry, to Stevens Road down towards Jacob Tom Highway 276 and that area, that stretch of the railroad bed. This is something that I'll leave it to other commissioners to comment on under their time to speak, but it's something that the town has been working to do for some time now. This will pave the way for the town being able to have basically a really nice walking trail, bike trail, that could virtually run. Eventually, we want to get out to the Pennsylvania line on Route 1, but the idea is to start building the network slowly here. So this has been approved by the town attorney. The one thing that he is suggesting is that if you want to vote on this tonight, you would put a motion forward to accept the agreement. The second thing would be to put a motion forward to have me engage with a title company to do the final steps necessary to get this recorded in the Cecil County records.
I make a motion that we adopt this resolution tonight so that we can move forward with the other legal proceedings that go with it.
Can I get a motion to contact a title company?
I second the first motion to accept the agreement of sale. If you want to call for a vote on that.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Now, I make a motion that we contact the title company to go through with the remaining legal proceedings.
Thank you.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Town Administrator.
The next item is, we don't have a resolution tonight, but I wanted to bring to your attention that it's time for us to reappoint the Board of Ethics. We do have one existing member, Mr. David Fox. We have Mr. Chip Slayball, who had to step down about a year ago because of work conflicts. He has expressed an issue, has expressed a concern, man, I can't get my words out here tonight. He's expressed an interest in getting back on the board. And then we have another gentleman, Mr. Andrew Snyder, who's actually the grandson of Bud McFadden, who is interested in serving also. So my recommendation would be, I know you folks like to interview potential candidates to serve on boards, so I would ask that we try to get that done for the next town meeting because we have requirements under state law regarding ethics forms and some changes to our ethics ordinances that need to be made to put us in line with the recent changes in state law on ethics. So just giving you that heads up.
I do not, but I think the town administrator wants to do them all as a slate. Is that what you're saying?
Because we could do Chip tonight. We had him on the board and we know him and there'd be nothing to say.
It's the board's pleasure.
Yeah, it's the board's pleasure. They want to do that.
Yeah, I make a motion that you could appoint Chip Slayball tonight.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. And I would like for us to set up, get the contact information, set up an interview with Mr. Snyder and talk to him. Before we move any farther forward, I have never spoken to him myself, and I think we should interview him first.
All right.
And thank Chip for coming back on board to help us out. We appreciate it.
Yes. Yeah, he approached me after the groundbreaking.
Do we have anything else, Town Administrator?
That's it for that portion of the agenda.
Mr. Boyd?
Hi, I'm Jim Boyd. I'm a town resident and teacher at Rising Sun Middle School. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the town of Rising Sun for its support in the Rising Sun Middle School Tiger Trot that I just recently helped put together for the school. The town was very instrumental in making it a very successful event. The mayor was very helpful in promoting the event with me on social media and elsewhere. Chip, Mr. Peterson, chief, was very helpful along with his officers and fire police in helping direct traffic and everything else. Chief was also helpful with the application process to the state for the use of roads and things like that. Town Administrator Bonnerberger was very helpful in a variety of things with helping me with signs where I can put them and also with the road construction issues going on that were going on at that time. He was very helpful in helping navigate that tricky area. So without everyone's help, the event would not have happened. So the town was very instrumental in making it a complete success. So I just wanted to take this opportunity and thank you all.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Boyd, for putting this on every year. And I always speak on behalf of the entire board that we are excited to have Tiger Trot every year. And I know you and your family put a lot of work into that event, and we thank you for doing it each year to help benefit the Rising Sun Middle School. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Wagner? Oh, excuse me. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? All right. Hearing none, Ms. Wagner?
We have, I guess that's lilac and pink, so...
Spring colors.
Yes. I think that's what the girls were thinking of when they were putting it together. You turn to page four, to the statement of net position, cash and cash equivalent is Investments is $95,705.33. Tax and service charge receivables is $108,640.16. Amount due from other governments is $21,987.76. Amount due from other funds, which is the proprietary funds, is $367,695.81. And other receivables is $12,971.42. We have restricted cash of $48,892.67 for total assets of $1,109,236.72. We have payroll liability of $2,533.69 for unrestricted net position of $1,106,703.3. Any questions about the net position for the government funds? Let's go to page five, and you will see that the revenue year-to-date is $2,166,108.38. The total expenditures year-to-date is $1,677,346.49 for a positive net position of $488,761.89. Any questions with regard to the revenue and expenditures? And then you have your supplementary information where you will see your budget-to-actual, broken down by each fund, general, police, planning and zoning, public works. And you can look at your heart's content on those little details. Streets and sidewalks, solid waste, parks and recreation, debt service. And then we will go to the very last page, page nine, which is disaster response. And then we have the total budget to the total actuals. So at this time, we projected that we would have $2,012,968.56, and we actually have $2,166,108.38 for a positive of actual to budget of $153,139.82. So we have higher revenue than we were planning. The expenditures budgeted was $1,692,328.4, but we only actually spent $1,677,346.49 for positive expenditures of $14,981.55. So we're doing better to budget to actual by $168,121.37. I think that's pretty good. The next is, I guess what you would call the pinker pink, and these are to March because we don't have all the April bank statements yet. So we have here on page four, the proprietary funds. You'll see water and sewer. We have total cash in water and sewer accounts of $1,125,102.48. We have service charge receivables for the utilities of $213,573.58. And then we have the due-tos and due-firms between the multiple counts, $902,142.55 and due from other governments, $236,956. We have restricted cash between water and sewer of $70,475.31. And then we have net capital assets, which is the assets less the accumulated depreciation between water and sewer of $20,834,390.43. So our total assets for water and sewer is $23,382,640.35. The amount due to other government is the Bay Restoration of $27,036.67. And then we have the due-to-do firms between the proprietary and the government of $1,269,838.36. Our long-term debt, which the majority of that is the sewer project, which is over $12 million, but the total is $14,517,099. And then we have the Southern State Escrow of $10,000. The net investment in capitals is basically your net assets less the debt that we have, and that's $6,317,291.34 for unrestricted of $1,241,374.89. Any questions with regard to the proprietary's net position? The next, we will see the total revenue of water and sewer is $915,761.8. We have total operating expenses of $1,449,750.54 for negative losses of $533,989.46, which of that is depreciation, which is a non-cash item, of $642,135.84. So our overall negative cash is $696,104.56. Any questions there? Okay. We will look at the supplementary information, and if you want to, there's the detail of the water and the sewer budget actual, but we will look at the totals on page nine. And we are under the revenue by $38,120.89. And I would say probably the majority of that is due to the fact we did not increase the rates when we projected we were going to increase the rates. So the total budgeted expenditure was $1,491,504.33, and in actuality, it was $1,449,750.54. In total, water and sewer proprietary fund, we spent $41,753.79, more than we thought we were going to. But if you look at the net non-operating income, which adds the other expenditures, we had planned to be at a loss of $749,515.34, and reality, we were only $696,104.56 loss. So we are positive to the budget by $53,410.78. And as I always remind you, there's $642,135.84 of that. That's depreciation, which is a non-cash item. So it's not like we overspent by half a million in reality. Any questions there? Okay.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wagner.
You're welcome.
Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. During the period of April 24th to today, 5/8, we responded to 123 calls for service. The most notable was a series of break-ins last Friday. As a result, we've made three arrests on Friday, and those subjects were charged in our waiting trials. Also, we had an incident, this is unusual, but we want to make sure it doesn't happen too often. A young family did not protect their house for small children and had a small child consume some products that were, that was bleach. So it just serves as a reminder, Mr. Yuck does exist. Teach your kids about it and make sure you protect your cabinets and your electrical outlets against small kids because they are curious and they will wander over and try anything and place anything in their mouths. We also attended the Safe School Town Hall meeting last week, myself and Commissioner Warnock, and it was very eye-opening for some parents to come to realization that there are bad people in this world, and we do our best to protect them in the schools. So teach your kids to take threats against the schools seriously. There was an incident at Elton High School where the kids started to get restless instead of following instructions, and it doesn't make for an easy way for us to get information out if the kids aren't listening. So please teach your kids to be serious about those events. We also attended the fire company banquet. I awarded a plaque to the fire police. For the number of years that I've been here, anytime I picked up the phone to call for assistance, the answer I got was, "I got your back, buddy." And they would always show up and provide me with a number of fire police from Rising Sun Fire Company and from Water Witch Fire Company. The drug take-back was held last weekend. We received 13.7 pounds of pharmaceuticals that were turned in. That number's down by, it's down a little from what we normally would get, but we have a drug take-back box here that's here every day of the week, so that shows that the community is aware of it, and they're bringing their drugs in all the time, not just on those specific events. And that's my report.
Any questions for the chief? Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Town Administrator, do you have a report this evening?
Yes. We need to talk about the trash bids that we put out for bid. The way the town does its trash bids, we put out a very comprehensive bid spec, which talks about all the areas that we want to get trash as one bid and recyclables as a second bid. And over the years, the costs have been increasing in trash collection. So we've tried to be very creative over the years at how we can try to keep the cost down, and we've been very successful compared to some of the other communities. However, this year, we've had, we've been notified that there will now be a charge for bulk pickup, and that's something that's really going to be uncomfortable for everyone because the trash haulers, we put it out to bid, and we got three bids back, and as part of those bid packages, there were costs ranging from $25 an item to $55 an item. So that's a side note. The other thing we did this year to try to keep the cost down is we requested pro bono services in some areas. And what I mean by that is we really can't ask for pro bono services for picking up trash or recyclables at people's properties, but the dumpsters that are at the veterans' park, at the public works garage, at the sewer plant, the yard waste dumpster, the trash cans that we get for the various community events, we broke that all out into multiple categories. And we asked for pro bono services in exchange for giving them promotional banners around town so that they would get 365-day, 24/7 coverage to try to get them to want to trade the promotion of their company versus providing pro bono services. Nobody bid on that. So we're going to be seeing some increases there. But more importantly, our bid specifications were very precise and broken down into what we were looking for and the amount of frequency we wanted in pickup. And when you do a bid spec, there's a couple ways that you can consider the bids, and there's a couple of caveats that can make bids not acceptable. So when you do a bid, you're not obligated to give it to the lowest bidder. You are permitted to give it to the lowest, what is called responsive bidder, which is someone who gives a bid that covers all the areas that you wanted and did it in a manner that was concise and clear and is going to be beneficial for the town, in this case, in the long run. Unfortunately, we got three bids back, but all three bids are technically unresponsive because of some fairly significant defects in the way they bid. For instance, we asked specifically for 52 weeks of pickup in some areas. When you look at the bids, they're not based upon 52 weeks, which can create a situation that at the end of the year, we might think that we're paying a certain amount of money because they gave us a unit cost and they told us what the annual cost was going to be. And at first glance, the annual cost would look like a really nice number, but then when you do the calculations, you realize that it was based upon a monthly pickup and not a weekly pickup. So that creates a situation that as we're going through the budget year, we could be protesting to a hauler, saying, "Hey, you've exceeded your annual cost," but they could come back and say, "Yeah, but we gave you what a unit cost would be." And so the fact that you had the pickup more than 12 times a year, that's not really our fault. So we had one company give us pro bono services on something that legally we can't do. We can't allow somebody to do pro bono services. So what I'm coming to you tonight is after talking to the town attorney, he is requesting or he is suggesting that all the bids be disqualified and it be put out to bid again. And putting it out to bid again would open it up to anyone. It's not a matter of just putting it out, putting it out to bid for the specific companies, but putting it out for anybody to bid on it. The problem is, we don't have a 30-day window, so we would be looking for a two-week turnaround with you guys might even have to have a special town meeting to accept one of the bids so that we can have a seamless transition on June 1st when the current contract technically expires, if we can't get the current hauler to continue the service at a negotiated price. So we're doing everything we can to keep it as quick, keep it going as smoothly as possible. But I guess from a staff perspective, we are suggesting and recommending that the bids be disqualified because there are just too many deficiencies in all of the bids that could end up costing us more money than what we would like to. And I would request that you understand that the reason why I'm not going into all the exact specifics of who, what, when, is because that can create a legal issue for us down the road if one of the haulers wanted to protest or something like that. So it is within our legal right to just disqualify all the bids and start over again.
I think that's the best thing moving forward. I don't know what the board's pleasure is on it, but it seems like we're all in agreement on that.
I make a motion that we direct the town administrator to disqualify the bids and reissue the bids again.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I think argue might have had.
I was about to say something. The, when you say they've been disqualified, okay, they've gone from, have we gone from the unit price or from a collection standpoint of frequency? What are we asking for in the contract?
What you just cited is one of several examples of where they did not properly respond to what we requested. In other words, we asked for unit pricing on a 52-week pickup and an annual cost of that. The unit pricing is clearly not based upon 52 weeks. In one case, we had one that was like 65 weeks, so not sure where they got that from. And then another was based upon a monthly pickup. So that's just one of the examples, the most glaring examples. And let me just say this to you, the bids are very comprehensive, and we have a right as an entity that once it becomes really labor-intensive, we're not obligated to go through with a fine-tooth comb and find all the deficiencies in the bids. They are disqualified right up front. They will be reissued. We've had several people look at the bid specs. They're very clear and concise, asking for things. It's just various mistakes that the three vendors missed, and it would not be in our best interest to try to fix it for them, ask them to correct what they submitted, because then that can become unfair to the other bidders. We have to just toss them all out and have them resubmit.
Right. I agree.
All right. Can I get all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Passes. Town Administrator, the other thing that I would add is, it's going to be, like you said, a very hard sell to try to sell the residents on the fact that then they have to pay for bulk pickup. But when it comes down to it, these are independent contractors that we opened it up for bid, and anyone can bid, and this is what they came back with.
And I think some of this stems back to the landfills. In the past year, the landfills have raised, these kind of, last year raised their price extremely high, their tipping fees, so it's...
And they're also limiting what they're taking now.
Yeah.
Where in the past, that's never been a real issue with us, so...
But regardless, that's still going to... But regardless, that's still going to be a hard sell. We can say that's the reason why and people still won't understand that's why.
I mean, I can appreciate, you know, before I would want to put a couch out to the curb and pay fifty-five dollars to have it hauling away. I'm going to borrow a pickup truck and take it to the landfill myself, quite frankly.
Where it's going to cost you a minimum of fourteen dollars.
Yeah. So it's, 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 it's just odd. I just, I just think we're better approaching it this way. It's better for our residents.
All right. Do you have anything else?
That's it.
All right. Uh, moving into my report, a couple of things. Um, myself and Chief Peterson attended a ribbon cutting ceremony for a new playground at Rising Sun Elementary School. Um, this was an effort by Ryan's Birthday Party Foundation. Ryan was, um, Ryan Castile was a young, um, kid who passed away from cancer. Um, his grandmother has put a lot of effort along with his family into this foundation. Um, they was, were able along with a grant from the state of Maryland to raise money, uh, for a disabled, uh, playground where disabled kids can play right alongside other children. Um, Chief Peterson and I attended the event and I think we both agreed that it was wonderful to see, a wonderful addition to our community, um, and very innovative. The, the playground definitely is. So it was great to see. Myself, the board of commissioners and Chief Peterson attended the Rising Sun, uh, Community Fire Company, a Rising Sun banquet, uh, where on behalf of our community, we presented a donation to them. Um, it was a wonderful event. Uh, we have a wonderful, um, fire company that, uh, we are blessed to have in our community, um, along with the EMTs and the fire police. They do a lot, uh, within our community. And sometimes I think people forget that they're an all volunteer organization. Um, so a big thank you to them for all they do. Uh, there was a Rising Sun fishing derby that the Rising Sun Chamber of Commerce put on this past Saturday. A big thank you to, uh, the Chamber of Commerce for doing that. Um, a lot of kids came down, a lot of fish were caught. Uh, it was just a great, uh, morning. Um, and so a big thank you to Ramsey Ford, along with the Rising Sun Chamber of Commerce for doing that every year. Uh, last and foremost, uh, one of the biggest things that we've had in the past week was our groundbreaking for our new water line. Um, on behalf of the board, I want to personally thank Commissioner Othman Reith for all of the efforts along with our town administrator, um, that went into planning this event. Um, he spent a lot of time, conference calls every week, um, trying to make it a great event. And I know I speak for everyone when I say that it was wonderful. So a big thank you to you for all your efforts. And a big thank you to, um, Secretary Grumbles from the Maryland Department of the Environment for, uh, coming out, uh, and for, uh, visiting Rising Sun. It was great to have him here, him there, uh, along with different community leaders. Um, so a big thank you to Commissioner Othman Reith. I did want to say that we received in the mail, uh, this wonderful proclamation from, uh, Delegate Hornberger, and it's an official citation from the Maryland General Assembly, and it says, "Be hereby known that the sincerest congratulations are offered to the town of Rising Sun in recognition of the Water System Interconnect Project presented on the second day of May, two thousand eighteen." Delegate Kevin B. Hornberger, Chairman. So a big thank you to.
You've got another one the day of, too.
Yes, we received one from Senator Norman, Senator Lisa Norman. Um, she presented that to us. Um, so it was wonderful to receive that. Uh, we also received a call from the governor, um, sending his, um, biggest congratulations for this event, um, and also apologizing that he wasn't able to attend. Um, but it's on the radar of state and community leaders, how big of a deal this is. It's been twelve years, um, and it's amazing to see this start to come together. Um, Commissioner Othman Reith?
May I ask?
Yes, absolutely. Sure.
Um, twelve years ago, when we started this, and I'm the only one besides, now Calvin wasn't even here. Uh, I'm the only one that's around still that's, that was involved in this original water and sewer project. Twelve years ago, we couldn't get anybody from the county or the state that wanted to touch us. We were like a person that just you couldn't be around. The difference now being at the groundbreaking, we actually had people that wanted to be here, which is a great change in the overall attitude towards Rising Sun. And it's much nicer now when people aren't hating you than it was back then.
And Augie, I would say this, you know, a lot of people that, uh, may have forgotten or are new residents to our community, don't realize that we went through mandatory water restrictions. Um, we went through this moratorium from the state that prevented us from building. Uh, we had a lot of unhappy developers and landowners who wanted to develop their land. Uh, and we legally had to provide them water and sewer and we weren't able at that time. Um, so I can't imagine what you went through at that time and what the boards went through at that time.
It was very interesting, just very interesting. Was it really fun to go to Martin's, believe me?
No, I bet not. I bet not. Um, Commissioner Othman Reith.
Okay. Um, it's been a busy couple of weeks since our, our last meeting. Uh, once again, congratulations to our, um, Chamber of Commerce for the fishing derby. I, I had to go into work that morning, but as I went by, it was a good crowd.
Lots of cars out there.
I think it, once again, it was a world record, wasn't it, for our chamber? But it's a great family event. I, I can't stress that enough, the, the family with the children, the grandchildren, the great grandchildren there doing that. And, you know, it just, I hope continued success of that. Uh, and along with the, the rest of the board, you know, I attended the fire department's award banquet a couple of weeks ago. And it was, uh, a really nice, it's the first time we've been as a board in a few years. And they give out a lot of awards. They recognize their membership, uh, out there. So it was, it was really a good event to be at. And it was good to see, uh, Judge Davis out there and a lot of other people. And, um, those firemen, uh, had a busy day that day, firefighters and the EMS, they had a very busy day. I don't know how they did it that night. They had a very, a fatal accident on Route One that Saturday. It was a terrible day, the sirens going off all day. So they deserved to have after that, have their, to, to throw their party. And I think they did because it was, they were ready.
A big thank you to the fire departments that covered for them during the banquet.
So, and then, um, Monday night, I went and met with the fire department's board of directors. Uh, want to thank, uh, President Bill Eiler for having me out there to clarify some things on the water line and the fire hydrants that are going in on this line. Uh, so appreciate them inviting me out. And then the next night, uh, Calvin, myself and, uh, Commissioner Pearson, we went up to the county meeting during public, uh, what's it called? Public corner, six o'clock. And, uh, along with Dave Woodruff, Representative in Fire Hall, and we made a nice presentation to the county council to help us, um, take care of, uh, these fire hydrants coming down this new line. And then, of course, Wednesday, you know, we had the, the groundbreaking. And this was not an event to, for the board and all to pat ourselves on the back, look what we did, great job, not at all. This was put on for a very, very minimal cost. Um, I want to thank Bay Ace Hardware for the donation of the tent, tables and chairs, Bigfoot Steaks and Hoagies for food, Buck's Restaurant for food, Four C's Pizza, Gus and his family out there, uh, for their food, Joe Shepherd, uh, former commissioner who was involved in this and Joe Shepherd Designs, of course, KCI Technologies, all the help that they've, uh, put in with this, Debbie Fowler, Lauren Good, who helped me coordinate this, and of course, uh, Martin's Foods, who's always there for us at any event. So we invited a lot of the heads of, and secretaries of agencies in the state who've been working with us on this for the past few years. And to see Secretary Grumbles here and, and speak, um, you know, that, like the mayor said, that says a lot about what this, uh, line means coming through. And I know a lot of residents' biggest concern is the, the, the rate increase and what this is going to cost. And I'm, I'm a rate payer too. I'm right there with you. Nobody on this board is immune from that. We understand it. And this was to, this was advertisement for the town that all these, uh, companies and property owners and businesses that have been waiting years for this water line, who have heard us talk about it for years, it was to let them know, hey, it's here, it's happening. We have the notice to proceed on, uh, April twenty-fourth. And even though what we did the other day was ceremonial, over this month, PAC one is coming in with equipment to get started. And we have to have water flowing by the end of this year. And it's actually happening. So, uh, we had, like I said, some, some property owners around here have been waiting, some farmers who have been looking to sell their property as their retirement to developers, some business owners who had other property, they wanted to, some developments that were half done, that needed water. Uh, that was to let them know, it's here, it's happening. And the more we can get this water sold, more, uh, buyers on this line, it's going to help reduce the impact to us residents. Two years ago, we passed a resolution, maybe a little more than that. Brian and Joe were still with us at that time. Um, and we knew what it was going to be. It actually was the best rate that we'd seen in the past ten years. So it was kind of a blessing in disguise, even though it's high. But I just want to let everybody know here in May, that by the end of this year, we're going to have to raise the water rates. We've got this, this big debt that we're going to have to pay. Unfortunately, we're the generation paying for the new infrastructure that's going in the ground for the next forty, fifty years, maybe sixty, because the technology today is much better. But do everything you can over the next, uh, seven months, eight months, uh, to get used to reducing your water use. The price of gas right now, ladies and gentlemen, go out there and look, it went sky high. I don't hear anybody screaming. We've just kind of gotten immune to it. It's in two seventy, two eighty a gallon. But with water, we can also reduce what we use, low-flow toilets, low-flow washing machines, faucets, limit your car washing, go down and see George Temple at the car wash down here. Um, get rain barrels and collect, uh, rainwater for watering your plants, limit your yard use, you know, water use on your yard. And the scary thing is, we're in a very dry spring right now. I hope this is temporary, but I think it's been so cold for so long, we got snow up so late that we kind of forgot. But we're, we're in a, I won't say a drought, but it's a very dry spring, even though everything's greening up. Look at the dirt, it's drying up, cracking. So I hope it's just a temporary thing that we got some rain coming because if we get a, if this is a preview to what the summer's going to be like, um, it's that type of event that Chester Water Authority's water is going to help us head off, uh, in these dry months. We're going to now go from groundwater, what we're doing about two hundred and fifty to two hundred and eighty thousand gallons a day. We're going to have seven hundred thousand gallons a day ready when we turn the valve on. And this is a lifetime partnership. So start now doing everything you can to change your lifestyle, to, to limit your water usage and, and do everything you can, invest where you can, uh, because you can control it. We, we only charge for every thousand gallons and that helps control it. Um, I'm a family of two and we still are always working on our bill, like what did we do last month that jacked it up so high? So it's, it's here, it's, it's happening. Um, so just, like I said, ladies and gentlemen, start using these few months to change your lifestyle and your water usage as well as your sewer usage. It had to be done. As Augie said, he's been on this board long before many of us. Uh, Mayor Cox even said, this probably is going back seventeen, eighteen years, this issue. And fortunately, we're able to line everything out, make it, make it come together. Chester Water has done a lot of the construction on the Pennsylvania side already, and our Maryland side should go pretty quickly too. And I think it's going to be a very positive thing for this town if we don't just focus on the fact that water's going to be more, more expensive. Our trash is now going up at, at no fault of our own. We've got a beautiful town here. Even with the event that happened last week where Chief Peterson and his group caught that guy, uh, very quickly, it's a safe town to be in. Um, I love it here. I've been here thirteen years. Uh, I want to help this town grow. That's part of the reason I'm on this board is to help mold it, just like you gotta, when your kids grow, you can't stop them, but you want to grow them and mold them correctly. And our grandchildren also. So, um, like I said, we had a, a lot of people here last week. It wasn't a party to pat ourselves on the back. It was to tell everybody, uh, and the mayor had his tagline that we are once again open for business. This town has been shut down, uh, since the moratorium went in because we didn't have enough water, didn't have enough sewer capacity, and now we're going to have it. And Main Street, as you see, the Vanderhoff is, uh, getting ready to open a new business out here, except for a couple of storefronts that are uninhabitable, were full. Uh, and people are moving in here, houses are selling pretty quickly. So it's, it's, the future for Rising Sun is, is very bright. And I, I hope we can reduce that water impact, um, going forward. And everybody on this board, uh, is going to do everything they can. One other thing I want to mention, uh, I don't want to steal none of Commissioner Warnock's thunder, but the agreement of sale for the Rails to Trails property is another big positive selling point for the town of Rising Sun. Uh, Port Deposit has the river, Northeast has the river, Elkton's the county seat, Fair Hill, uh, has got the racetrack. We needed a niche here. And everybody loves a good hiking and biking trail. Go up to Calvert Park, go up to Glasgow Park. Uh, last year, along with Commissioner Warnock and Calvin, we approached the county. We've had a great relationship with that county council. Commissioner Schneckenberger has been a great partner for us. When we told him we wanted to get that property, he said, I'll do everything I can to get it for you. And along with the other commissioners and the county executive, we now have it. And it's going to be a beautiful trail. It's going to be a very positive thing for the town. The chief and his guys are going to do an outstanding job of keeping it safe. And it'll be a good place to go and exercise and walk because we have some good gyms and exercise programs here in this town. Uh, if you've probably seen on Thursdays, a group walking the streets around here and doing jumping jacks in the middle of the street. And that'll be a great, uh, event that will connect our parks on the east side with the west side. Commissioner Warnock's already started clearing brush over there, connecting to the trail that he built with the stream restoration. And we look forward to this thing continuing on. We know once we get it up and running, that other communities are going to want to connect to it. And that's going to make people want to live here. And it's going to help sell houses and have new ones built. So like I said, Commissioner Warnock, when he comes back, will have a lot more details on that. So I hope everybody's enjoyed the pictures. Uh, a lot of this stuff was donated. Like I said, it was very minimal, the cost, uh, for this event. Uh, the hard hats and the shovels were donated by KCI and repurposed for the next groundbreaking that somebody will do. Uh, we had a great turnout of elected officials from the state come up from Annapolis. Uh, we've made a lot of trips from Annapolis to Baltimore to Harrisburg, back and forth. Our dog park, everybody loved our dog park. Um, seeing what we had done down there with that corner. Uh, there's our cool little challenge coin that Mayor Marion designed and we gave out so everybody'd have something to walk away and remember. So like I said, it was just, it was a great day. We had people here that have never been here before and they loved it. They're going to come back. Cheryl from Plumpton Park Zoo brought a baby, uh, I don't know.
Wallaby.
Wallaby. And it was the hit of the party. And she tells everybody, when you get done walking the zoo, go down to Rising Sun, go get gas, go see Johnson's, get some beer, go eat in the restaurants, you know, there's so much to do here. She directs everybody into our community here and they're a great partner to have. And then we had everybody sign a pipe that we're trying to figure what we're going to do with next, but it's a great thing to have later on. So, all right, I've talked enough. Thanks, everybody.
All right, Commissioner Othman Reith, the only other thing that I would add to that is, um, I had a few realtors reach out to me, um, about homes in the community. Um, and according to them, uh, we have a very low, uh, inventory of homes in the community. Uh, whether you're a buyer or a seller, now is the time. Um, and I think it was great that they also reached out to me to learn a little bit more about the town so that they could tell their prospective clients. Um, if you're coming to purchase a home in the town of Rising Sun, come to town hall, come talk to us, learn about why the rates are this much, why we have these things here, learn a little bit about the history, um, and what happened prior to here. I would love to have said that, you know, when we went and did this water line, that we had a rainy day fund and we could just take from that rainy day fund. But there was no rainy day fund. Uh, and unfortunately, we had to settle the residents with this. And we're all residents, we all paid the cost.
And, and a lot of other communities throughout the county are in the same situation. Read the paper, Chesapeake City, Port Deposit, everybody's struggling with water and sewer issues and rate increases. Cost of living is just.
And speak of the, speaking of the developers, when they came to the, uh, groundbreaking, one of the developers came and cornered me and the first thing he said was, I didn't believe I would ever see this day. I've had this piece of land in the town of Rising Sun. I've wanted to develop it. And it's been over a decade that I haven't been able to. So, thank you. So, thank you. Commissioner Braun?
Last night, the Planning and Zoning Board had an open house here. Dave Droustrom from the Maryland Planning and Zoning Board, who has been helping us with our zoning ordinance, suggested that we make some changes in zoning on just certain properties. These changes mainly referred to spot zoning and for properties that were non-conforming, and the changes would make them conforming. We contacted the people that were involved, that had these properties, to invite them here, for them to express their feelings about this, to ask questions, and we took notations from the people that said they objected to it and didn't wanna go along with it. And we will then be working on, I think there's just three or four of the group, but we will be working on these objections, to resolve them for the people that had a problem with them. That's all.
Commissioner Braun, did you wanna ask, since Mr. Delorme is here, about the traffic study, an update on the traffic study?
Oh, okay. Where is that at, the traffic study?
Okay.
Tom, could you go to the podium so we could have it on the voice on the video?
Good evening. I'll give you an update on my last comments a couple of weeks ago. We did start the traffic studies, Biggs Highway was pretty much finished as of this past week, really. In driving in tonight, they had done a lot of the striping, so that's, one of the concerns we had in starting the study was to make sure that didn't have a conflict. We have, this morning, started doing the counts, we will continue doing the counts for the next two to three weeks, we have eighteen intersections to do, and I did, from our last comments, I did contact Will Mapco, and basically, they're excited about us starting our study, they're looking forward to the data they can get. I talked to them about the trucks, and they're interested in the truck traffic that is coming through, and so from, they were excited that the fact that we were moving forward, and they were going to assist us. One of the staff members at Will Mapco is on some kind of committee with freight routes and so forth, and he's gonna do his studies to find out exactly what routes are, the freight routes actually show, and then compare our study with the counts that we're gonna get. So, both things started in the last two weeks, so I'm excited, and hopefully we'll finish up the counts anyway before the end of June, probably the middle of June is when we have to be done, so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you, sir, sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's all right.
Commissioner Pearson?
Just to reemphasize what happened on Friday, until we get the full staffing, we are asking for the assistance of Maryland State Police and the county. The response times, because they do not have as many personnel available for this small town, or for that whole area, quite frankly, the western part of the county is sort of very short on either troopers or sheriff's deputies. And fortunately, our officers got in and were able to get the situation under control. Until we get the full staffing, this could happen again, right? It's no reason to panic, it happens, it would happen if we had people here. Our response time would be a little better, but we can't stop the action. We can correct it afterwards, but we can't stop the action. If somebody wants to break into your house, or shit, or something, they're going to do it, whether you have a police car sitting in front of the house or not. The reason I'm emphasizing this is because the chief and I have been through a lengthy process of trying to interview potential officers. And in fact, we were just discussing it to, this evening, Perryville just recently hired two new police officers. Both of those police officers were not candidates here, even though we knew they were available, okay? The chief does an excellent job of doing a preliminary background check that would eliminate potential problems down the road, and that's even before the committee that interviews them gets that information, where we would be asking them certain, specific questions. So, please be patient with us, we'd rather be right than just have a body right now.
Mayor?
Chief?
In addition to what Commissioner Pearson has said, we are still in competition with larger departments, like Hartford County Sheriff's Office, Cecil County Sheriff's Office, Maryland State Police. We also are in competition with Elkton, Northeast, and Perryville. The pool of candidates isn't that great to start with, so we do our best to find the best candidates in that pool. When they get to us, it's just getting qualified people to show an interest that can get through a process, and everyone's process is similar. Some standards are a little higher than others, but everyone's process is similar, so it does take a good bit of time. When you don't take that time, you have incidents like some of the major agencies have had in Washington DC, Miami, Baltimore, and so forth. So, we're gonna go through the process, do our due diligence to screening, and hopefully our candidates end up being the best of the group.
And chief, you do a great job of making sure that we have our officers on during peak hours, and if high-call times fluctuate, that you change it so that that meets the need.
Yes, absolutely, sir. And what I would also like to point out, the relationship between the police department and the citizens of this town gives us better results. Although these calls for service came in at about nine AM in the morning for the break-ins, my guys inherited the case around twelve, thirty, one o'clock, and were able to solve it based on the community's input. When you have the sheriff's office and the state that come in, the relationship's not there, and they're slowly getting to the point where the case is solved. When my officers come on duty, it's almost immediate that the information gets shared, and we can close cases.
And I know that you and Augie both followed up on response time and have been talking with them and stuff, so.
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
That's all I have.
All right. Anything else come for the board this evening? Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor, before we close, could you, could we recognize the scouts here tonight?
Yes, absolutely.
It's always good to have scouts come and visit us.
Scout PAC ninety-two, thank you so much for-
Troops.
Troop Scout ninety-two, thank you so much for coming out.
Can you give their names, please?
Can you give your names?
This is my friend, Chris, and I am-
Thank you both for coming out, hopefully we did not bore you to death. Thank you. Upcoming meetings, Planning Commission meeting is Monday, May twenty-first, at six-thirty PM. We also have a town meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-second, at seven PM, and then we have another Planning Commission workshop on Monday, June fourth, at six-thirty PM. Those are both on the website as well. Anything else come for the board? Hearing none, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.